We just have a small flag to read.
Small flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Thank you all for coming. Do we have to have the doors shut because I'm afraid that if somebody wants-
There's a sign on the door that says, "Join Us,"
Oh, okay.
or to select them being in box.
And it says you can come in? So, we're meeting tonight to talk about two things. We need to approve and sign the warrant for the annual town meeting and to approve the final budget. I would say that Heather's probably going to lead us through most of this. And she's created quite the PowerPoint presentation, although it's not quite ready yet.
Technology.
In the meantime, I'll correct my statement from last week when I said hi to Stephanie Sawyer at home. I actually meant Elizabeth. So, hi Elizabeth. It's her sister.
Ms. Holland, guess what? You get me charged in PowerPoint today.
Okay.
Because any of this won't fit.
So Dropbox is not working, I take it?
Um, it should be.
Yes, it's- some of it works.
But if it's not, I may have to log on. Can I have that cord, that one cord, please? Apologize.
Sorry, we're not quite ready here.
No, it's all good to go and I forgot to plug in.
Are you going to start with the warrant or the budget?
I'm going to start at the beginning of the slideshow, which is going to start us off at the budget and then integrate the warrant as we go.
Okay.
Can I do anything to help you?
Ah, you can plug me in, please. See how we do here? Do you need this? No, that cord should be extra.
Do you want to move over, David?
Okay, mine the cord.
Yes, I'll move over.
No, forget it. I did put him on. You're right.
Madam Chair, remind the cord.
Okay.
Ms., can you just click cord, make sure it's in right, the blue lock on?
Yeah, they're tied.
Not registering yet. Let me try to play with this. John, can you play with this and I'm going to start the presentation without it?
Sure.
Alright, so we're going to get started while we're trying to figure out what I'm doing wrong with the technology world. So, our budget starts out, we've been through this numerous times, we're just going to run through some basic pieces of this. The first slide, should you be seeing it right now, would say budget facts. So, some of the things with our budget this year, I thought it's level funded where possible. Numbers are entered as we currently predict them to be for FY16. How we got here was we utilize previous years as needed. We've taken averages or we've knew trends and we've also worked with all the departments to actually figure out our numbers. Excellent, John. Now, you just got to go down one. Uh-oh.
Turn it off.
I don't know what you did.
There it is.
There we go. Nope. And then no. I think if you hit that button again and then select.
We need someone under the age of 21. How old's the intern?
Twenty.
Emily, do you know how to fix?
It's just toddling, it's not.
Does IT have an idea?
My IT daddy is not here. Alright, so moving back to this while we try to figure that out. So, as we were saying, our numbers are predicted with our current estimates based on previous years and also looking at trends and obviously taking into consideration as well department head requests and suggestions as to where the numbers would be.
Time out. Why don't you do it so we don't change the-
What am I doing?
Could be down arrow, sir.
I don't think so. Down arrow doesn't work.
Okay, then hit enter on the keypad.
Mm-hmm.
The right-click. Huh, you can do that too. Okay, there we go. Excellent. Thanks. Alright, we believe this for the most part to be a sustainable budget. We've worked very closely with the finance team and also the accountant, the treasurer, myself and whoever else we could pull into the process. We have had to change some numbers over the past couple of weeks as numbers have shifted because we've either received more funds because of the transfer station, indirect costs, or other things that have shifted and we've made up for those. We'll go over those as we get to them. Other comments we have here is where position became vacant because someone left in the middle of the year or someone's not expected to come back. We did not budget to fill the vacancy or if we did, we generally reduce the hours of the pay of that position. The last piece, when speaking with the Department of Revenue, when we created how we have laid out our revenue and also how we've laid out our expenses this year, we've modeled the recap process. That means it follows the logic that the Department of Revenue uses when Vicki, our accountant, each year calculates our tax rate. So, it's much easier for her to plug the numbers in. Plus, it's a little different way of looking at things than we've done in the past, but it's the way that a lot of the state uses to do so. I'm ready, John. Revenue, next sheet. Excellent. Alright, so our revenue this year for FY16 is projected to be $16,427,544. Those looking at it, initial thought is that, oh my god, that's a lot higher than last year when we were talking 14, 15 million. Yes, it is. The reason is, again, we've changed our revenue and our expense process to model the recap piece. So, this year for the first time in our revenue, we've actually included in it the enterprise funds and how much they look to generate for their revenue and their expenses. That is a good portion of why the numbers are higher. We also took into play any other outside sources of revenue that go in, including the W-PAT and also the ambulance receipts.
Is that confuse things in a sense because, you know, that money just has to go back into the revolving fund?
Um, I don't think it so much confuses things. It gives more of, as the finance committee likes to put it, a transparent budget because you're seeing more of where the revenue is coming from and really what we're worth as a town. And then you show it go out on the expense side.
Okay.
So, you're balancing it out. The other thing that passes through is also cherry sheet amounts. So, we show all of our amounts coming in. We also show amounts that come in that don't stay with us. An example would be the public libraries. It's approximately $8,000. It comes in on the cherry sheet. Later, when you see the expenses, it goes on back out. John? Alright, so our current balances, because this is a question everyone has. We have several things that we're able to take funds from. One is free cash. This year, we're currently at the balance of $37,047.36. As you may recall, back in October, we actually did a transfer, or actually, no, I think it was January we did the transfer. January. We did a transfer using our new free cash policy. So, we put 35% of our free cash into capital, 25% into operating, 10% into OPAP, and we used the remainder as needed for additional funding. Our next thing we have here is stabilization accounts. We have three. We have an operating, we have a capital, and we have an ambulance stabilization. The operating stabilization, as we move into this annual town meeting, is currently at $261,534.93.
Can I just answer a question?
Sure.
I'm sorry, again. Doesn't the Regional and Norris both have stabilization accounts that they put money into?
They're not funds that we can touch.
But they do have them.
They do have them, yes.
So, it would be nice to know like how much stabilization money that Norris has, how much they keep, how much they actually use, how they use that money. It'd be just something nice to know.
We have all the documentation in the office with regards to their current balance and what they plan to do with it over the next several years. It was presented by Norris and Hampshire Regional when they did their school budget with the finance committee.
How much is in the Norris one, just out of curiosity?
I can't give you a guesstimate. Couple hundred thousand dollars or less, my time is done.
And what about the regional? Okay.
Alright, so back to operating. So, we started with the $261,000. We have various proposed articles for the FY15 portion of the annual town meeting and that totals us at $25,000. The ending balance that we could play with therefore would be $236,534. Operating, again, is generally utilized as a rainy day fund. It's our, uh-oh, we have a problem and we need to grab funds from somewhere. Uh-oh, something broke and we need something. The next piece is the capital stabilization. We're currently at $223,613.54. We have proposed articles for the FY16 budget, or, I'm sorry, FY16 articles on the annual town meeting and they total $186,174. That leaves us with the remainder of $37,439. Capital stabilization recommendations for that come from the capital improvement committee that is in our town bylaws. The next piece is ambulance receipts. We are at $179,021.14. These are the receipts through the end of March, so there's still more to be coming in. There's proposed article on the annual town meeting warrant for the transfer to the ambulance stabilization account for $25,000. The ambulance stabilization, I guess, I'm sorry, let me back up one second. I put this under stabilization accounts and I shouldn't have. I was thinking different directions here. But ambulance receipts are not a stabilization account. Essentially, they're funds that the billing goes into for the ambulance and then we're able to use it for ambulance-related purposes.
Almost like a revolving fund.
It is, yes. One of those purposes is the ambulance stabilization account, which is what we have on there for $25,000. That was a stabilization account we had created last year at the FY15 annual town meeting and the purpose of creating that was to start putting funds aside solidly to purchase a new ambulance as we moved forward. The next thing we have here coming out of the ambulance receipts is a proposed article for the transfer to the EMS or ambulance-related expenses and that's for $75,000. That purpose right there is something we've been doing every year. It actually shows up on the revenue side of things. We've utilized different amounts over time. This money, when we look at it from finance, and we generally say it just goes into the pot for revenue, but it specifically has to be allocated for ambulance or EMS-related expenses. So, it will go directly to the fire department for that purpose. In the past, there has been a practice that we used to transfer $10,000 from this account over to the police department wages for their EMT services. However, according to the auditors, that does not qualify. That is not related to the ambulance service and therefore we cannot do it. Now, please mind that even though we can't take it from this piece, so we can't say $75,000 and $10,000 coming from this, we can still put an additional $10,000 in the police department wages. We just can't say it's directly coming from this piece. So, when you look at it, we did make that, we did put that in for the time being for the Board of Selectmen to decide what they want to do. Finance committee has not seen that yet, so they may have a difference of opinion on it. However, the purpose was to kind of stabilize things where they were. But moving forward to next year, it would simply look like that's what we generally budget them, is at $10,000 higher.
Can I ask a question about, someone raised, approached me about the billing. There's always a, it's what you bill out for in healthcare and what you collect. Has the collections been, have you looked at the trends for collections for the past few years, if they're going down or up, or are they going up with the ACLS level of care? They should be going up, so you can bill at a higher level.
I assume you're asking about the billing amounts and not the amounts collected.
Well, it's, you can bill anything you want, but what they pay you is what really counts, so it's collections.
So, I can't answer that question right now. The best thing to respond would simply be we're working on generating that information as we speak because it has come up a few times.
Okay.
One of the things we're also working on is working with the ambulance billing company themselves, who I believe is Coastal Med, is it Coastal? I think it's Coastal. And to see actually what their percentage is that they bill and what percentage needs to be collected still and trying to come up with a way to follow up on the collections.
From a physician's side, traditionally, you bill out and you only get about 65% of what you bill. So, your collections is 65% of what you're billing. I just want to throw that out there because there was some grumbling that the ambulance wasn't getting their billing done correctly, but I don't think they understood how billing actually works in the healthcare. So, it's just some information you may want to have at some point. Yes. Thank you.
Alright, so that would leave our ending balance of the ambulance receipts at $79,021.14. Therefore, the total of funds available that unencumbered are $390,041.50. Any questions on those? Okay. John's ready to move on. He already switched slides over. Alright, so this is a comparison of our revenue for FY15 versus FY16. The colors show up much better there than my black and white copy. So, the first piece, you have property tax levy in '15. We had 10.2. This year in FY16, we have 10.6. Local aid last year was 3.5. This year, it's 3.546, so it's going up there. Local aid is the aid we receive from the state, also what folks refer to as the cherry sheet. Local receipts, 1.173 was last year. This year, it's actually slightly higher, 1.244. And for other revenue, and now remember, other revenue has, as we talked about earlier, that is the W-PAT, that's the ambulance receipts, that's the water enterprise and the transfer enterprise fund. Last year was 1.089. This year, it's 9.51. Both transfer and water enterprise funds have actually decreased in their amounts they're expecting to both pull in and spend this year. Alright, so you have your projected revenue for FY16. You see that 65% of our revenue comes from the tax levy, 22% from local aid, 7% from local receipts, and the other revenue comprises the remaining 6%. Expenses. With the balanced budget, we have $16,427,544 in expenses. Some major changes generally are themed as the following: meeting accreditation or state requirements, funding at actual costs, funding for training, funding for cost increases or fixed costs, equalizing departments, restoring previous cuts where appropriate, and creating new account lines to separate costs and make things more transparent. Apparently, that was on the wrong side. I'll fix that before we put it on. We just started the expenses and we're on the cover sheet. Thank you.
Want that one?
Alright, so this is the FY16 expenses. I know some of these numbers are hard to see. We are more detailed on the next sheet, but just to give you a quick overview of some ones that folks seem to miss. 4% is general government. General government's the accounting, the treasurer's office, the assessor's office, the selectmen's, TAD administrators, our fees for the buildings. That's general government. It comes in at 4%. Over there, it's zero. That's really, really tiny, is the cherry sheet assessment. So, these are the costs that we have to pay back to the state. Next thing you see is the, let's see, 2%, which is the debt service, 1% being the orange, which is culture and recreation. That includes the library. 1% for health and human services. That is the board of health. John, if you could flip to the next one. So, our top five expenses. 60% of our expenses go to education, 10% to employee benefits, 9% to public safety, 8% go to other. These are the pass-throughs such as things coming back from the enterprise funds and everything else. 5% is public works. Thank you. Alright, education. So, education is, as we previously saw, 60% of our expenses. And I like to think of education in two pieces. We get hung up a lot on the net school spending, so I like to break it down to make sure that we're meeting what we need to. First piece is the transportation costs and that's for both Norris and Smith Vocational. And then the second piece has two parts. It's the net school spending components. You have Hampshire Regional and that includes the operating and the capital or debt costs. Now, that is one in and of itself pot of net school spending. The other pot of net school spending is everything else. So, Norris, School Choice, Charter, and Smith, which I will edit before we put this live. Thank you. Alright, so education breakdown. Education comprises $9,839,556 of our $16 million budget. 3% of that goes to transportation, 49% goes to Hampshire, and 48% goes to Norris, Smith, Choice, and Charter. You're doing very well, John. Alright, net school spending. So, now we're looking at the pieces that are comprised to meet the Norris, School Choice, Charter, and Smith Vocational net school spending. The fifth component that we don't see previously because we don't actually budget for it, it's simply a credit, is the indirect costs. You see indirect costs in the top left-hand side in the light blue, which is $765,140. School Choice comes in at $54,887. This is a number that passes to us from the state. They tell us what we're paying. We don't choose. Charter, it's $948 that we'll be paying this year. Smith Vocational, currently calculated with all the students that we have either had sign up or are currently attending, including any special education requirements, the total comes in at $939,058. And then we have Norris. This year in the budget, we funded them level to what we funded them in January at $3,696,422. The FY16 funding level at $5,456,455 is actually above net school spending, not by much, but where above, at $3,487.
Now, that's the first time since when? A long time. We've been above net school.
We haven't met net school spending in a little while.
Yeah, that's good.
Alright, so some other changes that are big in the budget. Public safety changes. We have two and it's always funny when I say big in the budget, I'm talking $11,000. Police department wages, FY16, we've currently funded them for $568,670. That's a $10,000 increase. What that increase is, is if you go back and actually look at the amount of money they have in their budget, it's higher than this. Last year in FY15's annual town meeting, the town voted to transfer the cost of a cruiser into the police department wages because it was thought that the importance of having wages was higher than having a new cruiser. When we asked the police chief to present his budget, we asked him to present it level funded before additional funds are transferred into it at the annual town meeting. So, you do not see the cost of that cruiser in here to begin with. The second piece was, we had him initially fund it without the $10,000 for the police department from the EMT costs that usually came out of the ambulance fund. So, this is simply restoring that $10,000. Now, where will we be with police department wages next year? I think we'll be okay. We have one officer who is looking at leaving and at this point, we'd be unable to replace him without going forward with a prop two and a half. The next piece on here is communication wages. This is dispatch. We can't, unlike other departments, we can't furlough folks. We can't say, well, do with less. We only have one person on and we have to staff it 24 hours a day. So, instead of actually funding the number we had done last year, which we're already $10,000 under on, we had the police chief write us out a detailed calculation of what we were looking at for communication wages and that comes out at $184,000, which is $11,054 higher than where we're currently at.
What do, what are we, what are we expected to be underfunded in that line item this year? Are we going to be underfunded?
Communication wages, we actually have a transfer from operating stabilization on the warrant from the FY15 budget appropriations. So, we'll go over that in a couple of moments. Major budget changes. I was, apparently, I'm behind the, behind the eball in these.
I was pushing the button.
Alright, so awards. So, now we're into the warrant, which has some more budget components and then we can come back to additional budget questions as may occur. So, the first two articles on the warrant are awards. We have educational awards, which are done every year by the highway department, and we have presentations of certificates. I shouldn't say certifications. I got fancy and excited that we're working with the town clerk to present from the state for certain individuals. John? The next piece is our administrative. So, we have the treasurer-collector position to change from elected to appointed. This was an article that was on the FY15, sorry, annual town meeting '15 warrant and it was tabled. So, we have placed it back on this year. Liz, do you want to add anything?
I just have a question. When you table it, maybe Mr. Floyd can answer. When you table it last year and you put it back on again, does it change anything about how it's voted on or how it's explained?
When you table it, you kill it.
Okay.
And so, you present it as if it was brand new.
Same as I did last year.
Yes, yeah. So, there's no allegiance to what existed the former year.
So, it's kind of just like starting over?
It is.
Okay. Thanks. Did you give Mr. Floyd the additional copies I gave you?
I gave them to the chairperson.
Sorry. Robert, I was supposed to give these to you.
Thank you.
I did.
Thank you.
Alright, the next piece is the adopt tax title revolving account. So, there's currently in the works a master and a law that hasn't formally been put into the code yet, but it's in the process. It's already been passed. It is to allow the adoption of a tax title revolving account. This is one of those weird ones where you have to adopt the MGL into your town. It's like a strong chief law. I think we had another thing that was just like that last year as well, first, before you actually do an article to set it up. Fiscal year FY15 budget. We have two things to transfer from the operating stabilization account. The first one is $15,000 to cover legal expenses. This year, we budgeted at $22,500. The Board of Selectmen began a project legally that is costing us approximately 14-plus thousand dollars at this point, so we will need to transfer funds to be able to cover it. We do not believe we will have extra, extra funds to be transferring from the general fund at the end of the year for a line item transfer.
Heather, will you have these boxes in here, the note boxes for the actual printout?
That right? Yes.
Those, these notes will be in here as well to explain things.
Yes, well, this is the warrant. We generally hand out the motions.
Okay.
But those generally go over. But if there's any article, items in there for notes that shouldn't be included or may be amended, let me know or something added.
I just had, it helps makes, you know, explain what's going on here.
We tried. Alright, and then communication wages, $10,000 to transfer. So, last year, or actually this year, level funding, I think we're at $172,000. We know we're going to be over, so we want to just put us as close to 184 as we can. If we're 2,000, try. I think we can cover that in line item transfers, but I don't want us having a $25,000 gap that we can't cover. Alright, fiscal year FY16 budget. We have various things here. The first one's resident petition for health agent. That goes on regardless because it comes from a town resident with 10 signatures. The next article is the W-PAT loan repayment. This is something that's on here every year. This is for $20,401. This, again, will show up in the revenue section. The ambulance fees transfer. This is for the EMS ambulance-related services for $75,000. We have the transfer station for $215,922. That is the approval of their enterprise fund. You see their expenses. You also see their revenues and they both add up to that amount.
Heather?
This does include, oh, actually, it's not 215. It's 222. Should say 222.
I'd just like to come back to Article Six when you have a second.
Okay.
It's funded for FY16 at 35, but this motion puts it at 38. So, the budget has been adjusted by the 3,000 or so?
Actually, FY15 is budgeted even less than 35.
Well, this 16 here, it says F16, is 35, 182.
That's what we're putting in for FY16, yes.
So, but this motion is going to put it at 38.
That's correct.
Is that 3,000 accounted for in the budget or does that make the budget unbalanced?
It makes the budget unbalanced.
Okay.
Where's it going? Let me come back to the transfer station one. I wrote 215. It was the old number, but we did adjust it with Ed's recommendations last week to include the $6,000 cost for Randall's position over at the transfer station. Yes, ma'am?
Can we go back to Article Six?
Okay.
If it's voted by the town to fund it at 38,000, at what point do you balance the budget? That night or somewhere else?
I'm going to refer this one to the moderator.
I came in a few minutes late. I was, there was some people outside. Not clear why the budget is not the third article as it usually is. Why is it number 11?
I can answer that when we're done with this question.
I'm not going to. I need, I need the answer now before I can reply.
The reason the articles are in the order they are is because we don't, generally, we have the theme of not going back to review articles. That being the case, the award stuff always comes first. The administrative stuff has to become before the revolving accounts later on. And then it made sense to put anything that was revenue-related up first before you got to the rest of the budget, such as the W-PAT transfer, such as the ambulance stabilization, such as the health agent piece. the W-PAT transfer, such as the ambulance stabilization, such as the health agent piece. The reason you're putting all these first is the logical step that for some reason, if the town says, hey, we're not paying, we're not transferring $75,000, we're transferring five, now we're scrambling to balance the budget. But at least we have the revenue figured out first when we get into the budget piece. If you do the budget first, and then for whatever reason the revenue aspects don't pass, you have a problem. This allows us to know which direction we're going. It also helps, I think, folks to understand how something happens with the budget. They see the revenue build, and then they see where the money's coming from, as opposed to just believe it's there, here's the sheet, we're saying it's here, but we haven't actually transferred the money there yet, so it's not.
So it makes sense, logical sense, okay.
Thank you. Question?
If, oh, you have a question, or you want my question again?
No, yours.
So I'm wondering if, for some reason, Article 6 passes, and, which is approximately $3,000 more, then what's in the budget? When and where do you find that money? Does it happen that night?
That would be a two and a half override.
It would have to go to a two and a half override?
Well, it doesn't have to, but that, that exclusion, but it can't increase a line item. So we can't increase a line item on the budget. We can decrease it, but we can't increase it.
So it has to be a two and a half.
So it would have to go, and then, it would have to wait until another?
The health agent.
Yeah, yeah.
Here's what could happen. Somebody could make the motion to take that line item out of the budget. And so my thought-
Altogether?
Yes. And my thought was to have the budget proceed, have discussion, have the votes, and by the way, the budget will be divided, as it historically has been, and then, we're only looking for a delta of 3,000. So my concept is to prevent confusion, and not get into what do we do with the budget. So if you, if you vote for 38,000, and the budget is 35, then you have to make a motion to take away the 35, but where does the 3,000 come from? So my thought is leave the line item as it is, and simply have the delta, the 3,000, assuming, you know, the line item and the budget passes, and then the 3,000 is up to a prop two and a half.
And do, can you make that, you can't add that as an article in this warrant, though, can you? Would you have to wait?
It's a motion under the article.
Okay.
And, while I'm here, if I can take an extra minute, the CPA article, and the two and a half, and the debt exclusion, those articles will be divided also, so we'll talk about each one individually. The, my concern, and jumping, but my concern is the proposed $10.8 million safety complex. I feel we're compromising the safety of senior citizens, those who can't drive at night, inconveniencing those who have babysitters that can't stay that long, and essentially, that's what a lot of people will be coming for. So my concept is to allow that particular article to be moved up front, or to be postponed to a time certain, namely, the next evening.
And which article number are you?
That's the safety complex.
Safety complex.
But what may happen is it may open at five of 10, and do we say to 10:30, everybody's leaving? So it's unfair to have an item this large at the end of a meeting, so I would allow in some sort of town. I can initiate a change as moderator. I'd much rather offer the options to the public, to the town, to the citizens, and let them vote to see if they want that article earlier, Tuesday night, or if they want to postpone it to Wednesday evening.
You can do that that night?
Yes.
So the whole Article 12, or just 12E? 12E is what pertains to?
Oh, no, I wasn't talking about that, I was talking about the safety. Oh, I see. Then, yeah, I'm just saying this for the first time all in one, then it would be 12E or whatever it is.
So we can take a portion of that?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Has it happened before?
Yes.
Successfully?
Successfully in changing the order?
Yeah.
It's a frequent thing. What happens is it's, the concepts are used. People do it for different reasons, and essentially, has to be a good reason to do it. My concern is to, what part of the evening are we going to discuss it? And before I came here, it was Article 33, the old draft, so I didn't know until I was handed this that it's earlier.
Can I ask a question? Remind me, I think it was before you, where an article came up early, it got passed or defeated, whatever it was, then later on, somebody brings it up again and changes the vote. But you don't allow that, right?
It's called reconsideration.
Right.
You know, if somebody looks out the window and sees a building burning, and they voted to do some improvements, a new roof, then that's a great candidate for reconsideration. But just to play games with the number of people who stay versus the number of people who leave successfully believe there's been a change, and we historically had a couple attempts, and the idea is you voted yes for it, you then bring it up, and you vote no, and the person had voted yes, and it really gets messy.
So that, you wouldn't allow that to happen?
It has to be unusual circumstances.
That's good, that's good.
I won't allow it.
Thanks.
Okay. Thanks. All right, back to Article 9. Transfer station should read $222,363. I need to fix that on the warrant.
222, what?
222363. It was changed at the end of last week. The next item is, I actually don't even know where I am at this point. I believe it's, 10?
10.
Okay, water department, enterprise, 633-999, 32 cents. And then we get to the omnibus budget for FY16, and that's all of the details. Does anyone have any more questions on the rest of the budget? Do you want me to come back after we finish the warrant here?
Just Omni spelled wrong, I think.
What's that?
It's supposed to be Omni, O-M-N-I.
Yes.
Okay.
This is what happens when you keep working on this for about 12 hours in the day. At some point, my eyes glare it over.
New eyes up here, that's all.
That's okay. That's okay. So then we have the prop two and a half pieces still. Can you go back one more slide, John? There we go, okay. So prop two and a half pieces, we have 12A, which is the override. This is for the advanced level services for the EMS, for the second shift ambulance, for $135,000. Questions, comments?
Do you want us to make those comments or questions now, or do you want to wait till the end?
If you have particular ones to this one, this might be a good time. We can always come back.
So I guess I would say that, given that this isn't required, we're not required to have a second shift until October of 2016, it would be my suggestion that we remove the override article from this warrant. I don't think that it's a battle that we need to fight at the moment. I think it could wait another year. I think there's other issues on the warrant that need more immediate attention, and so I would suggest removing it from the warrant. Anybody have any thoughts?
Well, I think the proposition two and a half, the, for the police, I, whoops. I'd hate to remove that, though. I think the police, because they're having to get rid of physician right now. I know it's not children.
I'm only talking, the only one that I'm, the only one that I would recommend removing is the fire department, because it's not an immediate, it's not something that we need to have in this fiscal year.
Okay, but you're, but you're not talking about the police?
I'm not talking about the police or the school. Both of those, I think, are immediate needs of the town. I'm not sure the second shift of the fire department is an immediate need. I think there's a lot of conversation surrounding that, and at this point, it would be premature to vote to fund that second shift.
I guess I'd like to hear from Dr. McDougal on that. Is he coming back?
I would assume he's coming back.
Do you want to talk about the police one, while I'm in?
Sure. The next article is 12B, and that's to fund $63,000 to the police department. We had asked at one of our last meetings for the police chief to give us a detailed breakdown of what it would cost to keep another fire, not another fire, another police officer, which he did, and I think we all got that in our email. So the $63,000 would maintain a police officer. And if I can move forward to see, it's a request from the schools for $120,000, which, as far as I can understand, would maintain two positions. If I'm wrong, if anybody knows, I think I'm right, would maintain two positions at the school.
So if this does-
I can read you the specific article on that one, if you like.
For the school?
Yes.
Okay.
So I had an email from Mr. Jurgensen, Superintendent Jurgensen, the other day, and this is what we've come up with. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of money not to exceed $120,000 to supplement the elementary school budget in order to maintain classroom teaching positions that will otherwise be eliminated, thereby increasing class size and jeopardizing continued services to students contingent upon the passage of a prop two and a half, so-called override pursuant to a Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 59, Section 21(c) referendum question, or take any action related thereto.
So I will say that there was, the school committee had met last Tuesday while we were meeting, and I wasn't there because I was here. So I'm not sure how the conversation went, whether they were asking for an override or not asking for an override, and the question I had when I got back to work that week was, are they asking for one? So the Board of Selectmen had asked to put a placeholder here, which they did, and my argument to Principal Pluta and Dr. Jurgensen was, if everybody else is asking for one, then I think that it's only fair that the school have the opportunity to ask for one. So I know that this number was derived from Dr. Jurgensen and Principal Pluta, and the school committee has not voted on it, as far as I know. My argument would be, let the school committee vote and decide whether or not they support $120,000. If they don't, then they have the option at the town meeting to pass over it. If they vote, and they don't think they need $120,000, then let them stand up and say, we need $60,000. But I think that it's only right that the Board of Selectmen at least have a number in there and a placeholder for the schools, and let the citizens decide what they want to do with that. Anybody?
I'm not adverse to that.
Mrs. Wright, are you all meeting again?
We're meeting. It's Wednesday.
This Wednesday, so in two days. Okay. So, I mean, at that point, they'll be able to decide whether or not they agree with that number, they don't agree with that number, or what they want to do with the article at all.
So we could always just amend it the day of the town meeting?
Right, they could lower it, they could pass over it, they could say forget it, or they could stay where they are, but at least there's an option.
If they didn't do this, would there be a negative outcome with a loss of a position?
There'd be a lot, there'd be two positions lost.
How many, two positions? What positions are those?
You can't even, you have to move class sizes, you need to, there's all sorts of stuff, but.
Okay.
So the only, so the only one that we wanted to talk about, really, I don't think anyone's object to leaving the police and the school in there, but John wanted to know what you thought about removing the request for the second shift of the fire department. My answer is, I don't think it's required until October of 2016, in which case, it's not something that we need to fight about right now. I think it can wait. And given there's so many other places that need immediate attention, this one should come off.
You've got to remember, these are prop two and a half overrides.
Right.
So it won't come into the fall. It's independent of the other. It's depending what the voters want. But from a physician's point of view, Dave, what do you think that would bring to the town for services and? Well, I think, you know, there needs to be a little bit of education process with what ACLS brings to a patient. You know, basic is what it is. It's basic, you know? Pick up the patient and run. And I was an EMT on a ski patrol, and for Cruz Roja in Tijuana, so I have a little experience as being an EMT. I was also ACLS trained as a physician, and run a number of codes as a second-year resident at Bay State. When you have that level of training, you're bringing parts of the hospital right to the patient's house, okay? And when someone goes down, say, the V-fib arrast and whatnot, and you're, they go into a fatal heart rhythm, and you do have defibrillators, they're automated, that will defibrillate somebody, but sometimes it's more complicated than that. And so by having ACLS level, you're bringing that advanced care that could save someone's life. Now, there's no way to know if you have a negative outcome with a death by not funding this. There's no way to know that, you know?
But you're not going to lose your ALS service in the next year by not funding this.
But I'm not talking about programs. I'm talking what this really is about. It's not about a program. It's not about a certification. It's about the care that you bring to your loved ones, to the citizens of the town, into their living rooms. That's what I'm talking about. And that's, you know, right now, we have it during the day. A lot of people aren't in town during the day. They're working. And, you know, as you get older, your heart develops other ways of perfusing itself. So somebody that's had little MI's, and they're now 70 years old, they have something called collaterals, which are small blood vessels that go around the main coronary, and they may survive a larger heart attack. But us younger guys in our 50s, we haven't had that time to do that. So we, you know, we could have a larger heart attack with a larger negative outcome, because we, it's, our bodies aren't ready for it. We haven't developed a collateral system. So those people are working. Then they come home after 5 o'clock, and I can't tell you the statistics for when an MI happens, but I'm just saying, statistically, one could envision that more 50-year-olds are in town after 5 o'clock than before 5 o'clock. And I just think, when you're looking at this, it's not about meeting the needs or the qualifications of a program, it's what you want to bring to the patient. So I could go either way. I'm just saying, you know, whatever the board's choices, I'm just saying, this is a great opportunity to bring a higher level of care to a citizen in need, in their home, and there's no way to know if we don't fund this, if we missed an opportunity. We would know if there was an opportunity, and there was a positive outcome, I think. And I think the key is, I mean, obviously, people are going to know what it brings to the community and to their own selves, and because it's a prop two and a half override, I think the people get to decide whether they want this service or not. If we were cutting it from somebody's line item, you know, I may have a different decision. But from my point of view, I think this is something that the voters are up enough on to make a decision for themselves. And as a 50-plus type of guy. Sorry. Well, I mean, what's your family history, John? What's your family history? Are you a smoker, are you diabetic? No, I just think that this, this kind of a decision, in my mind, is better decided by the voters. If this is a service they want to vote for and have in their town, let them vote for it. And I wouldn't let guidelines or whatever deadlines direct it. That's a political thing. I think you have to look at what's, what's the best interest of the townspeople.
Jackie?
Well, with the training that the firefighters have, or the EMTs have today, is it covered already, some of this additional training?
No.
So this would be something totally different for them?
They can push drugs. They can push drugs that may save someone's life.
Right, okay.
Unless it's a second shift.
Yeah, so if it's going to improve people's lives, it's a good idea.
And is there a downside for, for having it on there from a political standpoint, that you're having trouble with?
I just think that there's other issues on the warrant that, because this isn't required for another year.
It's not required to wear a seatbelt, or wear a helmet in Connecticut. You don't have to wear a helmet riding a motorcycle in Connecticut, but I do.
I just think you're asking the voters to vote on a lot of money, and this is something that could wait another year. That's what I think. Mrs., I'm going to just take a couple comments. Mrs. Wright?
I just had a question.
If you could just say your first and last name and where you're from.
Christine Wright, 14 East Street. If this information that you guys are discussing right now will be discussed at the meeting?
I think that this, this article will present a lot of conversation, so all of that information will get out.
But data, like, you're saying, stating that it's not currently covered in the services that the ambulance provides.
Well, it's covered during a first shift, which we have. We have ALS service for first shift. What we don't have is second shift, and so that's what this would cover.
But it's not?
But we do have paramedics who are on call on a second shift right now.
Okay, okay.
And we've got to remember, this is only the first of two votes that will be taken. If it passes here, it still has to go to another vote later on.[1773.83]
Just to make sure everyone understands, so, right now, we do provide ALS service pretty much twenty-four hours a day, we just don't have someone fully staffed at the fire department. So first shift from eight to five, we get a call, we're running out the door, we're good to go. If it's after that point, we rely on our on-call staff, but generally, they staff it so that there's one paramedic and one EMT wherever possible, so we're already meeting that. Even when we get to October sixteen, we still need to make sure we continue to do twenty-four-hour care, but at that point, we need to make sure we're covering twenty-four hours at paramedic level.
Mr. Floyd, did you have something to add?
Not into the discussion pro or con, but you don't want to build momentum, you don't want someone to go to vote and say that it isn't needed until the fall of next year and vote no, and then start voting no, and start voting no. So psychologically, you may not want to load up the voter for the election, assuming these pass, with the opportunity to find a less strong reason to vote yes.
I, I, I personally think the voters will be fine with making up their mind on each article.
Oh, they, they, they're smart?
Yeah. And, and I, I think what Dr. McDougal said is, it's not a matter of, do we need this now or later, it's whether the townspeople feel it's a valuable asset to the town.
I'm just offering a different point of view since we're learning.
Appreciate that, yeah.
It's October of the next year, yeah, thank you.
Are we continuing?
Yep.
Okay.
Did you want to take a vote on that, or did you?
If someone wants to make a motion to keep it or not, that's fine, or we can-
Have you been, you haven't, we haven't been doing that yet, though.
No, no, I would assume that when we get to the end, as long as there's no specific article that needs serious amendments or deletion, that you could probably vote on as a whole document.
By the way, the number's correct?
Yeah. Go ahead, keep going.
Twelve D, dead exclusion for the highway fuel tanks and generators, that's $198,875. When we get to the annual town meeting, the Capital Improvement Committee will be speaking to that as well. The dead exclusion, any questions on that? So just to remind folks, the, we currently have underground storage tanks over at the highway department for gasoline and for diesel. The diesel tank is still in operation, it's working fine. The problem with the gasoline tank is it's a double barrier, and the inside piece has leaks, so unfortunately, we can't continue to fill it up. Therefore, we're currently using other methods to obtain our gas. This is okay, it's been working. The problem becomes, if there's ever a crisis where all the gasoline is depleted everywhere, we will not have our own source to fall back on, and that's really the concern. The other piece is, by getting them to above-ground storage instead of underground storage, we take away some of the liability and some of the risks.
So if this fails, we still have, we're still able to function?
If this fails, we still function, yes.
And if there was a disaster, we could tap into Westfield or East Hampton for fuel?
Well, it depends, if they're in the same disaster we're in, they're not going to have any. So this essentially gives us our ability to maintain independency and survive, should we need to. It's the same thing as, we have major emergency generators, one located in Westfield and one located in Holyoke, that we could utilize, should we need to. The problem is, chances are, if we need to, they need to. And we're smaller, so it's not going to come to us. The next piece is twelve E, dead exclusion for the public safety complex for $10.8 million. One thing to share with you is, one of the discussions we had had at one point with the finance side is the possibility of pulling this into two articles in different ways. One article being the exact cost of the safety complex, and the second article being the cost for the design and construct, design and construction? Engineering design piece. The other option was the idea to have one for the flat amount of $10.8, and should that fail, move on to the second article, that would be just for the engineering design piece, so that the project continues to move. The concern with doing them in separate components, as we had discussed previously, and actually David and I spoke about this earlier today, is sometimes what happens is, folks will say, "Okay, well, I think that's a good idea, let's start with it." You invest all this money into the design piece, and then you get time for the next vote, and it never happens. Which means, at that point, the voters and the towns out a significant amount of money. I believe David had referred earlier to something being similar to that with, David, was that septic?
Septic around the ponds, I think, Mr. Swanson said it was $350,000. I had heard the lore of $500,000 study that was, or engineering that was set up for the ponds, and then when it came down to actually to fund the project, it was shot down, there's a three-ring binder sitting on a shelf in the highway super's office that has that plan, so it's not, so it's money spent but not used. The only thing I can say to this is that when we decided to rehab this building, you know, that, that pond sewage project was sort of in the back of my mind as, I don't know if I was chair at the time, I forget who was chair, but anyways, at the select board, we, we sort of had that in the back of our mind, and saying, if we really want to do this project, let's do this project and not do little bits and pieces, because every time you take a vote, you have a chance of everything just sort of stopping. And then all that funding that you've done prior is just sort of sitting there, and may or may not come to fruition, and it may be wasted funds that could have been used elsewhere. But, you know, get a strong commitment from the voters if they want to move forward with this or not. And I, and I defer to, to you guys and what your recommendations are. But I, I think when you piecemeal it, you do run that risk of, okay, we'll pay for this, but we're not going to pay for that later, and you spend $400, how much is the design and engineering?
$800,000 for the design, and that all includes the final paper.
But will that be with the final drawings, you know, that can be sent out with the construction bid?
Charlie Kinnicky, chairman of the Public Safety Committee. Basically, what would happen is, the $800,000 would be for the actual design and engineering, so that you would have the location of all plumbing, all wiring, all doors, types of doors, elevations to the building, so that you could go out to bid with those designs.
So it'd have all the schedules for all the plumbing?
Everything should be there.
Okay.
Okay.
So it's a good document that, if it got delayed a year, hopefully it doesn't, it would still be a good document with some updates.
If it was delayed a year, two years, it still would be workable to make it move forward. But the, the issue is simple, even though we're talking large amounts of money, I agree with David totally that we really would want to keep this thing going with the $10.8 million, because of the fact that if we go with the $800,000, we're guaranteeing at least a minimum year delay. You just got through a discussion about having a second shift on the ambulance, that's going to require a little bit in quarters and stuff like that that we don't have existing, plus what we have for a structure now. So the longer we delay this, the longer we're delaying the other end of this process. But if we put this in front of town meeting, and both of these articles pass at town meeting, then it goes to town election for a vote, and if it ends up that the $10.8 doesn't pass, but the $800,000 does, we're still moving forward. It still will give us the funding necessary to go through the winter months to get this design and engineering done.
So if the, I guess, a question to Heather, but if the $10.8 passes, we can pass over the $800,000 because that's included in the $10.8.
I would say not.
Because you want both on the ballot?
We want both on the ballot.
Oh, I, I see, okay, gotcha. So what happens if they both go on the ballot and for some reason, they both get passed?
Well, if they both get the pass, then I would take, the other one's already incorporating the money.
I know, but I think when people start checking boxes, you know?
I, I would be in a state of shock to see both of them pass at the same time, okay? But then you, as the selectman, would hold one in abeyance to go back to a town meeting and rescind a town vote.
Okay.
But that would be Mr. Floyd's category, not mine.
Okay.
And just to go back to the, the Old Town Hall, back in '05 or '06, there, there was an OSHA study done at the Old Town Hall, and there's a couple of things that came up. One is that the, the Old Town Hall is not structured to have ventilation, it's not the way it's heated. The other thing, there's asbestos, there's asbestos tiles, there's asbestos in the windows, and asbestos in around some of the, the heating, the boiler and stuff. So when people talk about, you know, what are we going to do with the Old Town Hall? Why don't we just rehab the Old Town Hall? I think you're looking at other costs that people haven't really thought about, when you start thinking about doing that type of rehab. But those studies are there, and I think, you know, for the finance committee, they should have those studies and to look at those studies. The other thing is that, you know, finance brought up a, a good question about how to maintain the building, and they came up with a number of $80,000. I, I thought that was a little high. I thought more appropriate thing to do would be to figure the square footage of this building and the cost for the maintenance of this building, and give us a ballpark figure what it would be over at the fire station, the safety complex, without the bays. I think the firemen take and clean the bays, and they take care of the bays and stuff. So I think the square footage of this building and the cost of this building would give a clearer picture of the costs for the new maintenance costs of the new complex.
I have two questions. I'll start backwards. So I'm looking at this $10.8 number, and thinking in my head, although we've seen your presentation, which is amazing, a lot of times, there hasn't been a point at which the Board of Selectmen has looked at the layout of it and said, "Do we really need two of this? Do we really need this particular room, the, the internal layout of the complex?"
That comes into the engineering design.
So my question is, if after we've looked at that, what are the chances that that number could be smaller?
I couldn't give you a percentage chance, there's going to be modifications on this. This is best on the, for lack of a better way of saying it, best guess based on previous construction by the square footage requirements. As of right now, I'm not aware of any duplication in that building. There are some areas that are just simply not designated for anything, because they'll probably end up being bunk rooms or stuff like that, but we didn't want to get into this preliminary design with that, because there was no need to it at that point. So chances are, if, if the $800,000 passes and we do the design and everything else, and we see some other ways of saving money, we're obviously going to take advantage of that. But based on today's information, there shouldn't be that much of a deviation in that.
Okay. And my other question is, has the finance committee voted to approve, to show their support for this yet, or have they, are they still undecided? I think after our last meeting, they had said they hadn't taken a vote, so I'm wondering where they're at with it.
I have heard myself, well, nothing from the finance committee, and I want to address this $80,000 maintenance thing. That was just a, oh, what do you think it's going to cost, and the engineer jumps up and says, "I don't know, maybe $80,000." There was no research or anything done like that, and then the next thing I know, everybody's hanging their hat on it. I mean, I talked to the fire chief, he's telling me three to five grand to maintain the fire station as it is. I agree with David, that, you know, you take the square footage of this building, and you can extrapolate it into that building. I don't think it's going to cost us $80,000 to run that, even with lighting and heat.
Okay.
And you were talking about cost before, where the cost can vary is right when we get the bids in, because I, I work with this on a daily basis, and if it's a good season, you save a lot of money, if it's a bad season, they hammer you, so we won't know until the bids are opened. And if we go over $10.8, well, we got a problem, if we go under, it's good for us.
Pertaining to the finance committee, I am not confident that they've met to vote on this yet, but we have time. I was just talking to the moderator, what we will do with each of these articles is, before we get to the motion stage, we'll write a line that says, "approved by finance, approved by finance, disapproved by finance."
Okay.
On each of them, after they meet again, they have a couple of weeks before we have to put that down.
Okay.
Do you have the election results, Matt Johnson?
I haven't seen anyone in the hall. If you, if you need, David-
Thanks, Mr. Moderator. So, so do you want, so we need to decide whether you're going to move forward by splitting this or not?
Yes, and-
Now or later?
We can come back to it if you want, and you can-
If, if you go with- So I think, I wonder if there is a way just to have both on the ballot, because you can-
So remember, this is the annual town meeting and not the ballot, so this is the first step.
But I mean, but what you want to do is, you, you, you-
So I guess what I recommend is, if you put this on the annual town meeting, and you decide, okay, we're going to do the whole piece, and then we're going to do a piece of the piece. If the whole piece passes, you pass over the next article and you move on and put the whole piece on the town, town vote.
So I was just thinking, to give the-
For election.
The, the voters a chance to, instead of saying yea or nay, they could say yea, nay, okay. And so they would, like, okay, the engineering part, to have it on the ballot.
Why can't we just make this as simple as possible, either, here's the number or not? Here's the number to build this public safety complex.
That's what I would do, but I'm just, you know-
And that's it, and let, and let them decide.
But, you know-
You start splitting it up into all these different pieces, and you get everybody all confused.
I, I think what we were talking about, and you were over there, we asked that same question, and Charlie said, if you put the $10.8, then $800,000, and they both pass, and they both go to the election, and just the $800,000 passes, we can still continue on with the project and regroup on the rest of it down the road after we do the A and Es and all. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yes.
Whereas if you do not split this-
Well, we don't want to split it, we're talking two articles, two separate.
But if you make it one article, you're putting, you asked me percentages, you're putting all your percentages on one vote at town meeting and one vote at the ballot box.
When is the, the election usually, is there a-
July.
Is it July, or is there a fall election? I thought we pulled it into that.
I think you can have one in July. I mean, you want to have it sooner than later, especially if you're talking about the school.
You know, one, one school thought could be that, look, we're just, this is what it is, this is what we need, and this is go forward, if you don't want to go, and then just let them decide. If, if, if it passes the town hall, a town, the, the town meeting, and passes at the ballot, great. If it passes at the town meeting but not the ballot, then maybe there's, there's a point where we can have a special and have a re-education and spend an hour or so trying to help re-educate people of the need for this, and try it again in the fall. I mean, it could be a second attempt.
If you're going to try it again, my understanding, you're going to town meeting again.
And have a special town meeting?
And then you have to have a special election.
Yeah.
I guess one of the things that we've got to be careful of is, there's construction seasons and there's bidding seasons. And if we get this passed, and we put the documents out on the street in the fall, early winter, we can award it in the winter, and the construction season starts, if we wait till the fall, we're going to miss a whole year construction season.
Right, we're delaying a year by the time-
Or we put it out during the hot construction season, and the prices we get back we're not going to like, because it's only going to be a job, people say, "If you pay me enough, I'll do it for you." That's, that's just a history of construction. So I, I personally like the $10.8 and $800 myself.
We are just trying to give you options so that you can sort of field the question and move in direction that you think is comfortable. Ultimately, the decision rests with you guys.
What do you say, Jackie?
Well, I was going to say, sometimes, you know, $10.8 can be scary to people, that's, that's a lot of money, and sometimes if you break it down so they understand exactly what's in that $10.8, which you, I know you've done over and over, but is there a way to give more information about what exactly the $10.8 will give?
I thought he did that in your presentation, you brought it down.
I know you have, but I'm, I'm hearing people saying, "Ten, oh, that's so much money, I'm scared of that."
I don't know, I don't know what to do. I've, we've put it together in PowerPoints, we've put posters out, we've put pie charts out, it's on the town website, we've offered open forums.
Well, in comparison with other towns and other, you know-
Right.
Is this a, a huge number, is this an average number, I mean, well, how does this compare?
What was Granby? Granby was six, but that was done a few years ago.
It's the years that caused this thing to escalate in price. This is a real workable number based on what we're trying to accomplish. We also have to incorporate into it the cost of fees that are going to go up, you know, and, and all the rest of that. It could be that when we get out the bids and we get done, it comes back as nine.
Did we decide what the number was, that it would raise the tax rate at $10.8, it was just over a dollar?
That, I think Heather can answer better than I can.
It says here, a dollar per thousand.
But some, somewhere in that area.
Okay.
It basically came out to around-
Dollar, dollar per thousand, right?
Yeah, I see it. Yeah, sorry.
But then there's debt coming off, like Norris is coming off, so-
Yeah.
But it was saved, dollars.
Okay.
Right, okay.
The dollar calculation was done by our financial advisor, who looked at all the debts that were coming off over the next several years and incorporated it in.
The dollar calculation was done by our financial advisor who looked at all the debts that were coming off over the next several years and incorporated it in. Um, I'm not an expert in this in any means, but my understanding with the conversation with him is that this would keep us as close to a dollar as we could for this piece.
Okay. So why don't you all think about that for a minute and let's finish this so then we can vote to approve with all the changes or not.
So the next slide is community preservation. These are FY15 and FY16 appropriations. Uh, most of them are FY16. There's only one that's 15. I'll talk about that when we get there. The first is a report of the Community Preservation Committee, which is the lengthy piece. That's like a paragraph and a half that town council requested we put on last year. They requested that we maintain this year. It simply talks about the four different accounts, um, the undesignated, unreserved, the historical preservation, the open space. And there's a fourth account, which I think is listed on the warrant that I.
Budget, budgeted reserve, open space, community housing and historical.
Housing, thank you. Housing is what I missed. Um, so it just mentions that generally they're regulated by statute as to how much goes in. I believe it's 10% in each and then the remainder goes in undesignated, unreserved. The first article that has a value to it is 13B. That's a transfer on undesigned funds for the Larrabee field project. We had one more piece of it that was finished up and the cost of that was $18,752.89. And the CPC should have just met and if they're not meeting, they're meeting on Wednesday to make sure that they approve this. If they do not approve it, we will pass over it at town meeting. If they do approve it, then it, nothing changes. Virginia presents all CPC articles. Virginia Ahart, the Chair of the CPC. Next one is 13C, transfer from undesigned CPC operating budget for $10,000. D is transfer from historical preservation in the amount of $5,000 for the veteran's grave officer for 10 flat markers at the cemetery. Um, 13E is a transfer from historical preservation for $1,500 for the veteran's grave officer for Civil War monuments. F is a transfer from historical preservation, $10,500 for the veteran's grave for the Judd Memorial. Transfer, um, sorry, G is a transfer from historical preservation, the amount of $11,000 for, it should say, the Board of Selectmen for the Larrabee Building for ADA doors. I got really excited with my letters. H should be the transfer from open space, $1,000 for the Concom Zipta Conservation Trails. And that concludes community preservation. Next article set is 14 revolving funds. So the first piece we have is to create a tax title revolving fund. This we had seen previously in the administration piece. When we accept the master in law, we can then appropriate funds into it to take from, and that's $10,000 for the pure purpose of tax titles. Um, 14B is to create a park commission revolving fund. We already currently have one park commission one. This is simply, oh, I'm sorry. I take that back. I was already looking at planning board. This is what happens after a few hours. Let me try that sentence again.
The park commission doesn't have one yet, does it?
That is correct. 14B, creation of the park commission. If you remember back to several meetings ago, the park commission stood here and they asked about collecting fees for the parks, specifically the new one, in order to better maintain the park. So they would charge user fees and then we'd use those user fees to maintain the park, whether it be paying for mowing or something else that has to do with the park. That is the purpose of this fund. Their guesstimation is that they would collect no more than $10,000. So it's 10,000 in, 10,000 out. The next piece is to create a planning board revolving fund. Now, the planning board currently already has a revolving fund. This is a separate one for the purposes of consulting fees, more specifically for the agreement they now have with PVPC. When John Furman departed the planning board, all of the knowledge and expertise, for the most part of the planning board, as it came to this information, departed with John Furman. No one else feels they have the expertise to move forward without assistance from an outside source. The outside source would, in this case, be PVPC, where they would again charge, so if they charge fees, if you're the applicant, you pay the fee, it comes in our account and then it goes out to PVPC. Um, and that's in the amount of $15,000. And the last piece is the appropriation of current revolving funds. There are numerous current revolving funds and I was running out of time, so I did not list them all on here. But to briefly go over them with everyone, we have plumbing inspections in the amount of $15,000. Electrical inspections, $15,000. Planning board, $10,000. That's for administrative expenses. The zoning board of appeals, $3,000. The council on aging van, $20,000. Dog licensing and control, $8,000. And weights and measures, $3,000. Any questions on revolving funds? Okay. Article 15, water department retained earnings. Um, the water department had requested a couple of weeks ago that we add an article on to the town warrant for the purposes of transferring funds from the retained earnings so that they can be used for research and development. More specifically, in the article itself, it reads, "To see if the town will vote to transfer from water retained earnings, a sum of $75,000 for the research and development of a water system master plan." The current balance in that retained earnings account is $215,006.07. Questions on that? Okay. Appropriate from the ambulance or to the ambulance stabilization fund. Again, we're going to, this is what we talked about previously in the revenues, taking $25,000 from the ambulance fees and transferring it to the ambulance stabilization for the purposes of once, sometime in the future, purchasing a new ambulance.
Do you want to wait for the town moderator? Didn't he have questions regarding these?
He's checking the costs, or I'm sorry, he's checking the results. As of right now, we know there was, I think, 511 voters who attended the election. My understanding from what I know, I think there were several possible write-in ballots where someone might have wrote in a candidate. And when you do that, you trigger all the ballots to go to the right side instead of the light, left side, which means they have to all been gone through by hand, which takes a few minutes.
I just thought he wanted to see these, that's all.
Um, Article 17, stabilization funds. These are all transfers from the capital stabilization account. Again, these are made by the Capital Improvement Committee and will be spoken to by the Capital Improvement Committee at the annual town meeting. A is $61,551 for the Ford 2015 F450. B is $47,000 for a new HVAC system at the library. Forty, C is $44,623 for cruiser and a camera for the police department. D is $9,000 for turnout gear for the fire department. E is $24,000 for a upgraded telephone, telephone system at Norris so they can dial out of their classrooms directly. And that is the end of my slideshow. Sure you all enjoyed it very much.
Thank you, Heather. Good job. Thank you.
Um, returning to the budget, are there specific questions on that or would you like me to review? What would you like me to do with it, please?
Um, well, I guess I'd like to get one thing out of the way first, but I guess you can't do one without the other. So can you go through, I know I asked you this earlier, so for the entertainment of all those involved, um, over the last few weeks, money has become available and has been put into different places. So if you could just go over the highlights of that so the board can decide whether or not they agree or disagree with where those additions have gone or not gone, that would be helpful.
So remember, we deal with a generally small budget, so anything over a thousand dollars, we generally consider significant over here.
Before you keep going, are you going to look at this paper here?
I'm going to start. Uh, they don't have that sheet. They just have the regular budget. You have my special summary sheet.
Sorry.
That's okay.
So this one you're going to look at?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Thanks.
All right. So on this one, a couple of things have changed. Number one, with the, I think we discussed some of these last time with the accounting soft, with the accounting expenses, we increased it by $1,200 in order to provide our accountant with the opportunity to go to a boot camp and also to sit for her certification for the accounting office. Between the boot camp, the certification and the mileage to get to the boot camp, um, it was $1,200.
So it should be noted that that was the one goal on our town accountant's, um, performance evaluation, that she get that certification. So, um, by funding this, that would help her to reach that goal.
The next thing is over in the treasurer's wages for the assistant treasurer collector. We act, oh, I'm sorry. I'm getting excited. Um, it's actually under the expenses for the treasurer collector. It was increased by $1,500 for the purposes of upgrading our current software so that we're, um, still working well with our tax software and we're not outdated. We can scan things and life will be much smoother for them. Let's see, is there anything else on this section? Uh, emergency management expenses, we increased from, originally we had $1,000. He had requested seven. We funded him at three, hoping for the purposes that he could pursue a study on generators and also go to some trainings and some other tools that he didn't have this year.
So you originally gave him?
One, we increased it to three.
So there's an increase of $2,000?
Yes.
Okay.
On the next page, you see the police department. Under police department wages, you'll see a $10,000 increase that we discussed earlier. Under the communication, you will see the same thing for communication wages, an increase of, I think this is slightly more, this is $11,054. Should you move down, you will see under, um, let's see, turn the page actually. Under the culture and recreation, the second section on the page of page three, you see the library. We've increased a couple of things. At one point, um, we actually had to increase them slightly anyway, a couple of grand, I think it was about four, in order to meet the accreditation. From there, we spoke further with Barbara and realized that we're only funding their books at 50% of what they're required by the state to actually have funding for. So in this case, we funded them pretty much at what we believe to be full. Um, if you look at the numbers, they look kind of weird and it looks like certain things are just much higher than they were before, and that's not really the case. But in years past, we've only had two lines for the library, one being library wages and one being library expenses and books. In this case, what we wanted to do is we wanted to start treating all the buildings in a similar manner wherever possible. So now you see library wages, library expenses and books, library utilities and library maintenance. The other benefit of splitting these out is so that when we ask Barbara in years ahead, hey, how much did you spend last year in gas and electricity? She doesn't have to sit through 12 sheets of paper and highlight them and add them all up. She simply can look at the account and say, oh, I can answer that. Same thing with regards to books and expenses. At one point, we had actually separated out books. And then we realized that the expenses remaining were so small, it wasn't really worth it. Um, plus it's one item she needs to hit at the same time, so it made sense that way. But we did think it made a lot of sense for folks to really see what we're spending on books and expenses. Because if Barbara's saying, hey, we're only getting this, but the town sees everything in one expense line, they don't see that. But now they see what the actual cost is. We have library utilities, which are gas and electric, and then library maintenance, which is going to be taking care of the building. Any questions on that? Okay. Um, one more thing we added, two things we added, I guess, are actually.
I have a question. Sorry.
Okay.
So I know that, and I'm in full support of the library. My question is, if we fund you at 100, generally the fundraising you do goes to support buying the books that you need to buy, right?
Well, some of it goes with programming and things.
Okay. So there's still a use for all of your, we won't see the mini golf go away or we might drink a little less wine, right?
Well, you know, we'd like to do more programming.
No drinking, just tasting.
Tasting.
We'd like to do more programming, you know, you know, you want free programming a lot, but this way the guys could make money and we could actually bring them home.
Okay. Thanks.
So on the first page, I missed two things. I apologize. One we added was the Gatsby 34 fixed asset study. We had added that last time we spoke, um, but we had the number higher. We've recently got a quote back from our current auditors who believe it should be $5,000 or less, which is phenomenal. So we have penciled that in and we shifted the rest. Um, there was a request by the Board of Selectmen last week that we consider putting the additional funds, in this case it would be $7,000 and some change, over to the reserve account, which you see under the finance committee. On that first page.
The reserve account was on the first page?
Yes, ma'am. It's right under finance committee.
How much money was that?
Uh, we used, this year we funded them at, um, $10,000 and they're doing pretty good with that. And it was a concern, I know especially of Ed, that we increased that, so we've currently funded at 17.3.
There it is. It's about 10 down from the top.
I see it.
I'm pretty sure that's most of the changes we've made recently. There weren't many. Some of it just had to do with the shift of indirect costs from the transfer station and the decreased cost of the fixed study.
And I think as we talked about last time, the reserve used to be at 50,000. So this is just a small amount of what it used to be.
It's a step in the right direction.
Yeah, definitely.
Before I ask if there's any questions, Mr. Moderator or Mrs., Mrs. Town Clerk, would you like to announce the results of the town election?
I'll put the microphone, you'll be on TV.
Thank you.
This would be a first.
Janine Domena, the town clerk, will give us the results of our annual town election. Hi.
Hi. Okay. Let's see. We have 4,339 registered voters in town. 512 people came out to vote. Um, let me see. The contested races for selectmen, David McDougall received 256 votes. Shannon Cutler, 302. Charles Kinnicki, 305. So Shannon Cutler and Charles Kinnicki, um, are elected. The Board of Health for three years, um, Jeff Dugess received 301. Charlie Kinnick, Charles D. Kinnicki received 175 votes. So Jeff Dugess won the election. Um, let me see. Joanne Alderman, who ran a sticker campaign, um, she received 78 votes for personal policy and procedures. For Hampshire Regional School Committee for three years, Joseph Moynihan received 279 votes. Margaret Larson, 311. Tammy Walunas, 296. So Margaret Larson and Tammy Walunas won those seats and every, everyone else was uncontested.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
That's a little less than 10%.
So at this point, are there any concerns or changes that the board would like to make in regards to the budget? Is there anything, it's movable. If you don't like where something is, you can move it. That's the purview of the board. Does anyone have any suggestions or changes that they would like to see to the budget?
I'll say one thing. I think this year was probably one of the best years that I could say in the past 10 years, that the budget process has worked this well. And I hope that you move forward with retaining this process and keeping a track on the, the items that you did this year. And I would like to thank the, the citizens of, uh, South Hampton for the chance to, uh, serve for the past 10 years. And, uh, I'm sure the board's going to do fine with, uh, Charlie, uh, on the board. Congratulations.
I have one, one concern that, um, I have, but I'm not quite sure what to do with it. So when we talk about the new growth, if you look at your revenue sheet, um, the new growth is assessed by the assessors this year at $150,000. Historically, that number hasn't been below $180,000. And so they're, they're estimating about $30,000 less than we have in the past. Is that something the board feels comfortable with or would they prefer to see that number increased?
The, this is an assessor's number, correct?
Right.
So the assessors probably know a lot more about it than I do, so I, I would say, I would say with their number, if we put a number there that was artificial just for putting it there, I don't think that would be good, in my opinion.
I just was looking at the historical data and thinking it seemed unrealistic to think that the new growth would be down that much, looking around. I just wanted to make sure that I brought it up and made the point, um, that it was a concern, so the rest of the board was aware also.
That's a good point. Uh, do we want to maybe ask them where they came up with that lower number?
I don't know, I don't know if it holds up the process or not. I mean, then you have to decide what to do with that $30,000. I guess one of the concerns I have is that every year when the free cash becomes available, people say, well, how come you didn't know? And so this is one of the places where we could say, well, you know, we could know. I'm, I, I just look around and I see all the new developments going up and I have a hard time thinking that it's going to be that low. So, I mean, I guess you could ask them. Or at least ask them to justify it at town meeting, you know?
That'd be a good idea. I mean, if we put it in there and we're off in the wrong direction, it's going to hurt us more. It's going to help us. That's my fear.
I mean, either way, you're going to have to answer to the, the public about why you're over or why you're under, but, um, it would not be.
It's a no win.
It is, but it wouldn't be the right decision to not say anything about it at all, so.
I think we should ask it though.
Okay. So we just want, we're asking about the 150,000 in new growth. And if the assessors can explain at some point why.
You want them to explain at town meeting why it's 150,000?
Why they're estimating less than it has historically been.
I think part of the answer is traditionally the assessor's department will generally estimate conservatively. So they'll, they're more comfortable being much lower than they are to over. So they're more comfortable being much lower than they are to overshoot a number and be too high. Again, I think Liz pointed out, if you look at the trend over this past several years, 181 is pretty much the lowest we've gone in the past five years. Last year, we were at 201. Now, granted, last year was a very booming year, but the year before that, Liz, we were at?
Sorry. 185, 189, 193, 181. So it just seems, I don't know, it seems there's somewhere you could use $30,000 in this budget?
Yeah.
And so I'm-
If it's true money.
You know, I'm wondering, I can't, I just don't, I don't anticipate that number being that much lower, so.
2011, 101.
Like you said, Liz, it's a call. Which way do we wanna call it?
And if you, and if you made the decision to change that number, which is something that we can do, where do you put it?
Yeah.
What do you do with it?
And if it turns out to be the wrong call, who do we take it from towards the end of the year? I guess it is a no-win.
Historically, David, have you seen us change that number?
I can't recall.
Mr. Floyd, do you know?
No. There is.
So, but they could justify that at town meeting, why that number is lower, right? If anybody asked, yeah. Okay, so if there's no other questions or concerns or modifications to the budget, would the board like to vote to approve the budget for fiscal year 16 as presented? Is that what you need from us?
You can do that, or you can do the warrant as a whole that includes the budget, whatever it's the wish of the board. The one thing I do wanna note, though, is I do need to fix the numbers on the transfer station for the enterprise fund. It should say 222,000 plus some change. I will fix that, but as long as no one has any objections with that number, the calculation's about the same, it just comes out to an additional $6,000, a little bit over that indirect, and the money is estimated in the revenue section, so it is balanced.
So the only thing that then that the board needs to decide on before voting on the warrant as a whole is, do you want to keep 12A? Do you want to move the debt exclusion for the public safety complex to the beginning? And if you do, well, either way, do you wanna vote on it in two pieces? Am I missing anything that we were talking about changing or moving? So let's start with Article 12A.
Pointers.
Oh, yes.
You can put any order for the articles you wish, that's your call as the select board. Once it's in the town, the town and the moderator, or moderator, has an option of changing that, so.
Yeah, I think we should leave it like it is and let the moderator from the floor judge the timeframe.
Fair enough. Okay. And do you wish to leave 12A and let the people decide, or do you wish to remove it?
I personally, I'd say leave it there.
Yeah, I agree. So at this point, there are no other changes to the warrant? I would, do I need, so I need a-
Before we do that, weren't we gonna talk about 12E again, whether we were gonna put an extra 800,000?
Oh, split it, sorry, you're right. So so far, just to clarify, we've kept all the articles, there's no modifications, 12A through D?
No.
So now we're looking at $10.8 million safety complex.
Yes, and splitting it or not splitting it?
Well, I guess splitting it wouldn't be the way I would say. Do it as 10A, and also have a second one for 800,000. Don't pull the 800 out of the 10A.
Right, for engineer design.
So you're saying, just to make sure I'm clear when I'm writing this, John, so we're saying two articles. So the first article's gonna say what amount?
10.8.
10.8, and then the second article's just gonna have the 800,000?
For the A and E.
Right, for engineer design.
Okay, we can do that. And then if we get to town meeting and the first one passes, the board can decide how they wish to proceed from there.
Well, again, I think, like Charlie Knickie was saying, that it's gotta go to the voters, and the voters have the ultimate decision. The best-case scenario, I guess, is they approve both and we have some, one of those issues to deal with.
By splitting it, doesn't it make it look like the cost is more?
No, we'll have to explain it.
Well, I think it can be explained with the 10.8 piece, that the next two articles will be presented. The first one is the whole piece, the whole pie, and the second one's only a piece of the pie, in case the first one isn't digestible.
I guess I feel like you should just give them, just tell them, it's 10.8 million dollars, this is what it's gonna cost, I don't think you need to split it up. I think you either wanna do it or you don't, and once you split it, you just start holding up the process and all the work that was done.
I would agree with that. You wanna keep it as simple as possible.
I think-
If it doesn't pass, you guys just have to get another special, you have a special in the fall anyway, so. You have to do a special in the fall to, you know, for free cash.
So the other thought, too, would be that if you follow Liz's train of thought, and you say, okay, 10.8 million dollars, so you put that on, you start having discussion, and you see things not going well, or maybe right before you know it's not gonna pass like that, at that point, you can actually make an emotion, or you can amend it, to say, 'cause it's within the scope of the article, we'd like, at this point, I move to, I move the town to vote to approve 800,000 for the purposes of an A and E contingent upon the passage of Prop. 2.5.
Who can make that motion?
Referendum.
Anybody?
Anybody.
A resident, not me.
Depending on how you see the conversation going.
So we would be amending the article on the floor, or passing over that one and putting a second one?
No, passing over. Amending it on the floor.
Okay, so from 10.8 to 8, so a whole structure-
10.8 to, or-
800, I meant.
Or you make a motion, thing off the top of my head, you make a motion to break it out. Eight, 10. 800,000, 10. And you vote on the 800,000 first, and close that however that is voted on, and then continue discussing the 10 million.
So kind of get the pulse of the people out there?
That's one way of doing it, and it's slices, and it's more palatable, and-
Well, that would also do what you want, Liz, in the sense that, let them have it and see what happens. If that's doable, I'm fine with that.
But either way, it's up to the floor. Anybody can make that motion.
Yeah, okay. So as long as it's permissible from your point of view, I think that's a good compromise.
Yes. Yep.
Okay. So we've made that decision, are we missing any others? Mr. Floyd?
I would want Heather to check legally, because when you would take that 800,000 into 10 million and put it on a 2.5 override election, just to make sure the legality is that the wording is exact, so I'd really want Heather to check with the town attorneys, and just to make sure legally, you can then take those votes, take that wording of the two motions, and put it on the election.
We have, will we have town council at annual town meeting?
Sure we will, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, but just a good idea to get them thinking, 'cause you wanna prepare the motion as you want it read, so, yes.
All right. Any further concerns, questions, issues, comments regarding the annual town warrant? And, Mr. Floyd?
And vote, to vote and then close the warrant?
Yes.
All in one.
All in one, yes. So we need to vote, I would accept a motion to approve the annual town budget and omniness, annual town warrant and omnibus budget for fiscal 16.
I'll make the motion. We have a second for conversation?
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there further discussion?
Right, sorry.
No.
There's no further discussion?
No, well, actually, actually, I did wanna say, for the record, about the public safety complexes. I didn't wanna leave the impression that I thought it was too expensive. I just wanted to say, I've seen Charlie work really hard on it, and I know that there's a lot of problems with the existing buildings, and I do believe that it should be done, and that I hope that townspeople agree to do something like this, because I believe it would be good for us in the long run. So I just don't wanna leave the impression that I didn't feel it was a good idea, and I think it is. So that's all I was saying.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the annual town warrant and the omnibus budget for fiscal 16. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I would also accept a motion to close the annual town warrant.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Heather.
I will have the paper for you guys to sign in about two seconds. I've got smart and separated the signature page at the end, in case I need to make amendments previous. So I will give that to you as soon as I locate it.
I would just like to say that this is the third budget that I have been involved in, and the most painless. I can remember, and I say remember like it was a long time ago, but two years ago, being elected and sitting in the back of the room until 11 o'clock on election night, listening to the budget be decided, and it was painful. And so I'm hopeful that this new process that has been established is one that will continue through the years and only get better through time. So I wanna say thank you to Heather, she's done an excellent job, the finance team and